We'll get started.
Mark, just so I know, she's a citizen of recording. Can you announce that she's going to do a recording? Just so people are aware.
Say that again.
You need to announce that she's going to do a video recording. Because she's a citizen. It's different than me taking meetings. Just announce that the meeting's being recorded tonight. Are we not doing a audio or a...
We did ask for it. No.
It's something additional.
There's the regular planning board meeting February 4th, 2014. You see that? I got the year right. At 7:32 and we'll get started. We have an extremely busy agenda tonight, a long agenda. We have a person in the corner over here videotaping it. For what purposes?
I just cover public record open meeting law. It's a public meeting, so I'll be covering this. I'll give you a copy, but you can watch it on YouTube.
But not for any particular newspaper or anything at this point in time? Thank you. The agenda tonight, I said, is extremely crowded. And we'll do our very best to get through it in a hurry. And I ask all of your cooperation in speeding things along. And if I get too windy, please remind me of it, alright? The first thing on the agenda, I will read the whole agenda. So everybody knows what the sequence of things is. The approval of the minutes for 12-3-13 and January 7th-14. Budget review and approval of the budget for the planning board for the town. We have two approval not required actions. One is 401 Sagamore Street. That'll be first. And the second will be 434-438 Asbury Street. After that, we're slipping into a pre-application conference with Canterbury Estates. I promised that we would do our best to hold that to 45 minutes. After that, we're meeting a general discussion with the town manager and chairman of the Board of Selectmen, who is sitting at the desk over there. What happened to town manager? He was here.
He was. He'll be back. He's working.
New and old business, zoning by law workshop, accessory unit revisions. Christine will have something to say about that. Subcommittee updates from the HDC, from the Patent Committee. Representative Peter Clark will speak to that. And while we're on that, I would like the board's approval to move the patent discussion to immediately follow the pre-application conference. Or actually before it or after it, doesn't make any difference. But keep it grouped together because they're the same people discussing the same subject. If there's any, if there's no objection, then we'll move that into that place. Is that alright with you, Peter?
Sure.
Updates on CPC and HAHT. We have a new alternate member who...
He couldn't make it tonight because of the heat, Mark.
Couldn't make it tonight. I was looking from the audience. And then we'll discuss her and any future agenda items, which I have a couple, but we'll get through those at the end. Christine, do you want to... Approval of minutes, 12-3-13 and January 7th-14. I presume the board has read them all and are ready...
I sent you one.
Rob sent me a comment from someone in December. He wanted an item added about a reference he'd made to the patent project. And that'll be amended.
Is there any further discussion from the board on the minutes? Now it will not entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We accept the minutes as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Budget review and approval. Would you approve the budget?
You put your packet, everybody.
Christine, do you want to speak to that?
What I provided you, you received it probably for the last meeting. We missed you in the snowstorm. There's two sheets here. Sheet A is next year's budget report. That's been submitted for the warrant for this upcoming meeting, town meeting. Sheet B, if you flip that over to the backside, you will notice on sheet B at the very bottom, there's a line item that says master plan phase three FY04 for $12,172. The finance director told me that the Department of Revenue suggests that any kind of carry forward monies shouldn't be carried forward longer than three years on a budget. And this one's over 10. So the monies are being absorbed back in the general fund unless your board chooses tonight to reassign or after town meeting to reassign those funds to a specific purpose.
I could speak to that. I know there's been some concern about an overweight problem from our file cabinets, not personnel. Upstairs on the second floor, some question about whether the... Well, it's not a legitimate observation is that we might be overstressing the old building by having so many file cabinets filed on the, actually in the middle of the room upstairs. And there's some concern about the safety factor. So I'd like to urge the board to ask the town to steer the $12,000, what is it? $12,172 to... Who do we steer it to?
Well, on the next, on the second page here, I drafted a letter to Chairman Mark Johnson and the Board of Selectmen with a warrant article language to see if the town will repurpose a sum of money, $12,172, from the 2004 master plan warrant article to be used for a second floor records management project or take any other action thereon. It will, we have public health, building conservation and planning. Each one of us has a set of files for every address in town. And there are multiple copies of things in those files. And they're jammed, they're heavy and they need to be consolidated.
It'd be nice to start an electronic program.
Phase one is consolidating the paper.
Well, maybe this will get it kicked off tonight. Where the town of Newbury this year has loaded $65,000 to electronically store all their files for exactly the same reason, they ran out of warehouse space. The other thing, the oddity here is we're, we've got on the, on Form A, a budget for a new position of Director of Land Use and Development for $81,000. That's putting the cart before the horse when we haven't... Last night, I believe, the Selectmen voted to establish a position of, this is at their Selectment meeting.
That's almost, that's almost a secondary issue, though. I think the first thing that we need to define is this $12,000. So let's get, let's deal with that first.
Alright.
I think we need to...
I was, I'd like to comment that if we're going to have a planning director and they have no budget for doing any studies or hiring consultants, master plan funds seem to be better used for that and let the town deal with their own structural problems in Town Hall. Because this is the kind of funds that are there for dealing with the planning issues in the community. So I would welcome a new planner with at least a little bit of working budget at his disposal. That's my suggestion.
Rob, you had some comments?
Well, no, I, I mean, I'm happy with allocating those funds to the management of the files for the planning board. I mean, I think that's specific to that. Although, you know, I, I, we're, I think the line item for having a Director of Land Use and Development, we have a salary for that. If we want to allocate other funds to that, that's something that, perhaps we should go to a warrant about or whatever, whatever ways of getting the funds. But, but I think, I mean, we're talking about something that's been allocated to the planning department over 10 years. And you're only talking about $12,000 anyway. So I, it seems to me that that's, would help with this management of the planning board issues, whether it's, you know, going to electronic or moving the files or whatever you're going to do. I mean, you know, I don't think it, I think it's whatever needs to be done up there. And it's a planning board issue. It's not necessarily a town issue at this point. Because we don't have any, anything saying that, you know, in fact, the, the building's going to collapse, collapse based on the weight of the files. Although, you know, it's obviously a concern down the road and they're, the lot, they're very heavy and all the other things. But we don't have any engineering report or anything else stating that. So I, I think it's just a, you know, I think it's an easy thing to allocate.
Mark Johnson, do you have any comment on, on the Chairman of the Board? You've been involved in the floor structural...
Not really, but I know that the building is the town's responsibility. So if you, if you wanted to keep planning board powder dry for planning board issues, you know, the town will have to tackle the structural issue. And I don't know that any one department should cancel its own funds to maintain the structure.
My understanding, though, is that these funds would then go to the general fund if they're not used. And so...
We can hear Mark for the use of the...
You can propose it for whatever else, like studies or whatever else. I mean, it's...
Well, I think you have to define that, don't you?
You have to define it right now when they kind of are disappearing.
Can I ask a timing question? What's the timing for having to approve this and submit a warrant article?
The budget A has already been submitted as part of, as the planning board's budget for the year.
Yeah.
It's identical to last year. So that director's position and that salary were there last year.
Got it.
This line item is not there. If you would like to reassign it, it should happen soon. So that it can get a warrant.
Right. But I wonder what the deadline is for that.
I don't have a deadline, but it was suggested.
I'd like to suggest that we actually spend some time, not tonight, talking about what we might do with it. Because I agree with the Chairman of the Board, Selectmen and Peter, that these are planning board funds. Yes, they need to be repurposed, but I think the structural soundness of the town's building is not our responsibility. So I'd like to suggest that we actually have that discussion. We may actually get back to doing exactly what's been suggested. But I'd like to at least think about, for example, in a future meeting, we'll be presenting the results of the MAPC/HDC study of the downtown. And I think one of the proposals is going to be looking at adopting a overlay district for the entire downtown. That's going to require the approval of the planning board. The planning board may want to engage in some expertise to assist in that or review that. There are a lot of planning things that are coming up that we should have money for, so...
Do you want to make that a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we...
What does anyone want to make?
Table a request for reallocation of the $12,000 budget to the record keeping for, for future discussion by the board.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed.
Can you prove the regular order?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to deal with the other part of the budget?
I'm sorry, Christine.
You could have... Would you like to approve this other budget?
Let's make a motion to approve the rest of the budget for the planning board. So it can go to a town meeting.
You want to make that?
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. We have two applicants for approval not required, 401 Sagamore Street. John Donovan requests Form A, A and R, to split the parcel 401 Sagamore Street. It says his map 25 lot 1, 26 lot 1. Is there someone here to speak to that?
I'm his dad. I'm not as handsome, you know, exactly.
Oh, you're handsome enough, but I'm old and deaf. So speak up so my, I'll eat myself, but the board and the audience can hear what you're...
Let me just tell you, because I know what the decision is. There's a plan that we're giving here. It's a, the overall lot is 170 acres. It's 170 acres. We're proposing dividing it into two lots. One lot will be 72 acres. One lot will be 96 acres. One lot has 300 feet of frontage. The other one has 2,000 feet of frontage. We just slip underneath the zoning requirements. That's it. Now there, that's as simple as that. Let me tell you, a couple of questions were asked. Let me tell you the background so that you understand what this is. Because Peter knows the background of this lot. I was not fortunate enough to be born this time. I did come here 45 years ago to Campbelloff. And I loved it every bit, every time. And I've tried to help the town and give back a little bit, the ball fields and my son's done the things. Something I can tell people, and I was telling Jeffrey, is that we've established in honor of my son, a scholarship so that any town member, your children or grandchildren in the town, people, we've endowed a scholarship, the first of the series, at one university, Yale University, so that any one of your kiddos gets into Yale, they can get a four-year scholarship. Now, you have to be a member of the town. My father was a member of it. John's grandfather was a member of the planning board in the town that we grew up in. So that's, and he was a school teacher in that town. So that's what we did. The joy of this is this is a wonderful thing that I'm going to propose knowing here. The sad thing is, this is John. That's a picture of John. Two summers ago. Oh, if I need proof that he's my son, it's a picture of me at the same age.
I understand he's sickly.
He is, he is dying. He's very short time to be with us. This is his boy. He said to me at four in the morning, he said last morning, Dad, I love him so much. My biggest regret is he'll never know me. Well, he's going to know him. He's going to know him for the ball fields. He's going to know him for what I'm going to do here. This is the two of us walking in a pub segment. This is when he was a little boy. This is him sick. So I'm going to get sick. And this is him, very sick. Now, that's the background. What we've tried to do here is I received a number from Christine, who, by the way, you've got a saint working for you. It's just a, like, I did do here in the present, you ought to have good disclosure. I brought her up, four eggs that I got out of that chicken coop this morning. One of them's an Irish egg, by the way.
What's an Irish egg?
Do you have any of them there?
That's a queen. But I'm not sharing.
One of them's an Irish egg.
Can you guess?
You can guess which one's the Irish egg. My mother was German, my father was Irish. She, my mother used to just crap one joke. She used to say, John, I'm really glad you ended up with the brains of the Germans and the humor of the Irish. Because if it had been reversed, it would have been a disaster. My father never thought that was funny. But we received a number of questions and I want to make sure that I've answered all the questions. Now, I have no authority here. My father, my son has all the authority. I'm a messenger and the authority I've got is I'm his dad.
So it's actually your son that's making the application to the board?
Exactly. My son's making the application for the do it. The question is, that I received is one, who owns this property? What we've done is I'm giving to Christine here is a deed of 1998, the transfer of the property from me to an LLC in 1998. This is, this is the official deed that's recorded as such. So this LLC called Sagamore Hill LLC. Well, the application is Donovan Conservation. This in 2002 is recorded in the state, transferring the name from Sagamore LLC to Donovan Conservation LLC. So that makes it Donovan Conservation. I'll give this to her. And then lastly, is what authority does John have to sign anything? He is the general manager of the LLC and he is the single member of the LLC. And this is dated February 3rd, 2014, today. I think it's today. Donovan Conservation. It's from the state. It says the name's a person authorized to act with respect to all real prostitute listed recent filing is John J. Donovan Jr. So he is, he can sign off on that. And I came tonight to make, Christine said you could just mail us in and do it. I didn't want to do that. I want to, I have to do this for John. He's back in the hospital. He's, he's hurting so badly, he didn't know it. But he's got a broken rib. But the pain and everything else is so much, he didn't know. And I think the cancer is spreading out to the bones and that's...
Well, we understand you being his messenger.
I'm his messenger. That's my authority. I'm the messenger to do this. And what I, what I just asked to do is to do this. Now, we, we are going to divide this like this. And I was just asked a question by Peter, oh, excuse me, by Jeffrey. Jeffrey, he has used the ball fields. You can tell about that.
Well, as I told you, as I told you earlier, it's rare that you get to chant, to say thank you to a donor. And I got to tell you, what this guy did in donating those fields is amazing. I've coached a ton of kids in this town in soccer, used your fields for practices, and they were tremendous. Kids love them, the coaches love them, the parents love them. And I want to thank you publicly for what you've done. Tremendous, tremendous job.
I tell you, I should give you goosebumps here. So was it me? I, I didn't know what to do. What John wanted to do, he loves kids, as you know, with the athletic club, what he's done. But he's, he's got, he bought this athletic club so that, well, anyway, he bought it for the community and make it so that it'd be another alternative to the Tony clubs around. It'd be a bigger job. But he wanted an athletic field. So we, he did it. He stripped back all the tops off. He then brought in gravel. He brought in stones. He crowned it. If you look at that field, it's crowned. He then, a foot and a half, forgive me for doing that, I just got to say what he did. A foot and a half of sifted topsoil.
Most of us have walked into, had a children play on it or something rather, so...
That was John, not me. It was John that advocated to do that. So what I would like to do is that ball field is right over here. What I'm keeping is the tops of all the hill and another 200 acres in Essex. I have a meeting on this Thursday with a conservation group with the idea, maybe, maybe, I can create a park in his honor of 350 acres of the finest land in all of Hamilton. Because you know, Peter, and other people know, and I know, if you go up to the top there, you can see the ocean from there. You can see the, see the Isle of Shoals, you can see Rockport, Gloucester. Everything is there in Hamilton that you've got. And I bought, I bought this piece at a time over a 45-year period. I bought one piece and another piece and another piece and put it all together. And you know how I've been putting it together for... So this is what I'm asking for. I'm asking for planning board approval. Not approved? If you do this, I have, you propose that you hold this in escrow. If you need another thing, we'll get another thing. John will sign everything that you want. And it will be his signature and he does it.
I can't tell where it is, but somewhere in the CPC process is a monument stone of some kind designating the Donovan Field and thanking the Donavons. I don't know the makeup of it, but there is something coming.
That's, that's right.
I don't, Jeff, it's not on the others.
That's, that's exactly...
I don't recall that the fields are...
That's, that's exactly...
In the interest of moving this along, Christine, is there anything that you have to add to this discussion?
No, the, the technical aspects of the A and R, he has, clearly has frontage to meet your requirements for that area on Sagamore Road Street. It's public way. There's two drives that you can see on the plans from Sagamore to the two parcels. And they're, as you know, quite large. Can you show me where the drives are?
Right away.
This is the road end.
Your son was, was able to sign the application?
Yes, he's able to sign it. He's, he's still brilliant. His body is erect. But what we will do is, because it'll be little things later on, is we'll be getting a power of attorney. But he's fine now. He can sign it. They'll do everything. And if everything's okay, and he's right, that's your field. And that's the monument that's going to be put, put up there. The Hugh Collins, who is here, so carefully did. He's got a flag up there. He's got a monument that's got little stones around so little kids can wait for their parents. There's one more thing I would like to do with the planning board is the parents come and they take care of their big kids, right? And they play the ball. But the little kids, what do they do? Well, there used to be a pile of dirt there, as he pointed out to me. They play in the dirt, they go home dirty. What I'd like to do, we had to take that up here, so many complaints.
It was a lot of fun for the kids.
A lot of fun for the kids, a lot of fun for the kids. So what I'm going to do is I'd like to turn around and have enough to put a sandbox in there. Oh, don't leave this. Sandbox and some swings in the name of John. So the little kids will have a place where all the big kids are playing.
We have such a heavy agenda tonight. We've got to move it along. No, stay, we have a comment from the audience.
I just wanted to ask John, who has access to 340 acres of Sagamore Hill?
See, I could say that, but...
Who has access to the 340 acres that John...
No one else. It's all privately owned.
Who will have?
Hopefully the world. It's going to be Bradley Palmer, it's going to be Donovan Park East complimenting Bradley Palmer West.
And Maopia Hunt will be able to go through there?
If they, Maopia Hunt, in spite of what they think is part of the public. It's a little joke.
It's supposed to be funny.
Okay, right.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept.
So, like, they can go through Bradley Palmer as well, but it'd be much broader.
Well, they have been closed off for the last couple of years.
No, it has not.
I'd like to...
We have a motion.
I have made a motion and motion takes precedence. I'd make a motion that we accept the Form A as submitted and approve it.
Second. Second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, I need two sides. I need a few sides, please. I'm going to start over here. Thank you. You got one with a... I need a couple of signatures on it.
Want to use this?
I need this one because here's my file add.
I know.
So I need two, three slip copies.
Do you want three?
On three are nice, but...
Two.
Two is... Two signed is fine.
Here, you signed it.
Okay.
That'll be funny. No, I can help you clear.
That'd be great. Time is of the essence. My daughter goes to his company because I appear without a season. I've done all you've done.
It's a dream. We can't...
I will thank you. Where would you like the decisions taken?
Right.
To win, so you can... On this application, I can stand with you.
You saw a lot of wildlife, many of the stations too, when you were going to... I left the not required submission. And I presume you're here to speak for that.
I am. Good evening, Chairman, Members of the Board. My name is Scott Cameron. I'm with the Moore and Cameron Group, civil engineers and land surveyors. I'm here on behalf of Philip MacRaeal. He's the owner of the parcel before you today.
I am. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Scott Cameron, I'm with the Moore and Cameron Group, civil engineers and land surveyors. I'm here on behalf of Philip Markrell, he's the owner of the parcel before you today. What we are presenting to you this evening, this, a little background on the, on the property, this was initially, well, last subdivided by Mr. Markrell's grandfather, Mr. Hollering. At the time, it was 1957, which came two years after the adoption of the subdivision control in Hamilton. They created a 30-foot wide way to create frontage for a retreat lot, which was 40,000 square feet in size. They built the house, they improved the way immediately thereafter. The house was built in 1958. The house that was in the front originally was built in 1953. What we're here before you tonight, since they initially subdivided this land three generations ago, they've changed the zoning, was, it's R1A zoning, and they have added the groundwater protection overlay district. So, that brought the minimum lot size from 20,000 up to 80,000 square feet, which made the parcel, the 40,000 square foot parcel, non-conforming, although pre-existing. And we're proposing utilizing the existing gravel road, which is 15-foot-wide gravel. I have some pictures I'm gonna show you today, to take the two lots and subdivide them into three lots or divide them. And we believe that this does not require any improvements to the roadway. It's been used by Mr. Markrell, he's a truck driver, he turns around his truck there. It's also used for logging, to come in and out of the site. They have done logging for several years, and I can show you pictures of that road here by the approach and pass those along. They're from a few different angles on it, from just today, actually. And that, the lots that we would create out of this would fully comply with the zoning.
When is the frontage on that third lot, though?
125 feet.
125?
Yeah, it wraps around the end of the, of the way. It's 30-foot wide on the end and then another 95 on the way.
I looked at the plan yesterday, it was very well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Christine, do you have any comments on this?
No, it meets all the frontage and acreage requirements, and the road that, they're on a private way, has a 30-foot wide easement. It's not built to that standard, but that easement was approved by this Board in 1957, so it's an approved private way by a subdivision plan. So, it meets all those standards, groundwater protection overlay is 80,000 square feet, all three lots meet that as well.
But if the roads aren't built out to 30 feet, then...
The road's at 15 feet now.
The right-of-way is 30.
The right-of-way is 30, and it's actually been on the clean. They could build it out to 30 feet if they wanted to.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this approval not required plan.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Can you take that? Can you take your plan? It won't be like this.
You can keep them if you like, for the record.